I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is a regular school board meeting. Today's February 12th, 2008. It is approximately 5:32 in the afternoon. Please rise for a moment of silence followed immediately by the Pledge of Allegiance. And as we have our moment of silence, please remember Brenda Lee Nunez, our Pace junior student that was tragically passed away recently.
Here's the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on my nation. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of this world. I pledge allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of this one nation, one nation indivisible.
Thank you. Roll call. For the record, everybody is present. Moving on to item five. Recommend approving the agenda of the rescheduled board meeting of February 12th, 2008 with any corrections or deletions. Mr. Gonzalez.
Thank you, Dr. Scuero, members of the board. We do have one correction on item number eighteen. Page 106 will be replaced with page 106A. And basically, on the agenda, on the regular agenda, on same item number eighteen, the word "above" needs to be spitting out. The word "above." That's all the correction.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Do I have a motion to approve item five?
Move.
Motion by Mr. Powers, seconded by Mr. Aguilada. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item six. Recommend approving the minutes of the regular board meeting of December 18th, 2007 with any corrections. Are there any corrections to the meeting of December 18th? If not, do I have a motion to approve?
Yes.
Motion by Mrs. Galvane, seconded by Mr. Cortez. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Item seven. Recommend approving the minutes of the regular school board meeting of January 15th, 2008 with any corrections. Are there any corrections on the minutes of January 15th? If not, do I have a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Cortez, seconded by Mr. Powers. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item eight. Superintendent's report, page 8, first presentation. One. Presentation of 2006-2007 Academic Excellence Indicator System District and Campus Report. Mr. Gonzalez.
Thank you, Dr. Scuero, members of the board. This is a AIS report, it's well-known. We've had it for years. It's required by law for us to make a petition to the board to be able to notify the community as well as the board concerning our Academic Excellence Indicator System. And at this time, I'll call on Dr. Cabazos, Superintendent, for current instructions to introduce his presentation. Dr. Cabazos?
Members of the board, at this time, we're going to have our administrator for assessing, reassessing, and evaluating, Mr. Avul Vasquez, do the presentation.
Mr. Gonzalez, Dr. Scuero, members of the board. You all have received the CD.
Mr. Vasquez, you want to speak loudly because the mics aren't working today.
Okay. You all have received the CD. There's two ways to follow through it. You can go to the CD, go to the summary report, or you can view the screen. The AIS report system released by TEA for public viewing, this is a report card that are prepared for the state, the region, the district, and the individual campuses. The report that we'll have today is the district report card. It will provide demographics of students, teachers, as well as school performance on state assessments, state reporting requirements. On the next fourteen pages, we'll review the summary. After tonight's meeting, the presentations will be made available to every campus, to our Public Information Office, to the library, public library, and the college library for review by the public. On page two, there's a brief description of the campus enrollment across the district. Students who attended Lincoln Park, BLA, and BAC do not reflect any of individual numbers by those campuses, since those students' data goes back to their original campuses they came from. The next page shows the demographics profile of the district, includes the ethnicity, the grade levels, distribution, and all the special programs that we have in this district. Page four is a summary of the school performance in both state assessment and alternative assessments district-wide. On page five is a breakdown of the graduation rate for the district, as well as the graduation types, higher education readiness component, and college admission information. Page six is a breakdown on attendance rate, completion rate, and dropout rate for the district. On page seven is a breakdown of the accountability rates for the campuses in the district-wide, and also the historical data for the district since 2001 to 2007. On page eight is a profile of the district employees. It includes the average salary, teacher profile, and degree information for all the teachers in this district. Page nine is a snapshot of the district revenue broken down by local, state, federal, and other sources that are used to calculate our budget. Page ten is an expenditure report for the district. On page eleven is a summary of the disciplinary actions for the district and individual campuses. Page twelve provides a summary of the removal of students from those campuses district-wide. Page thirteen provides a summary of the violence intervention and the violence prevention programs available in the district. And page fourteen is a list of the board members and the positions that they hold. Are there any questions?
Any questions or comments from the board? Mrs. Galvane?
I was happy to hear that you're going to have it available at the library and also at the college library.
Yes, ma'am. That is by law. We have to give it to the public library and the college library, and also our Public Information Office and every campus in this district.
Great. And then, could you give the percentage or the number for the completion rate, please? The completion rate for our district?
The completion rate for the district, as you all know, that's always a year behind. So, the graduation rate, the completion rate, and the dropout rate are always a year behind. So, even though it's a 2007 report, it will be for 2006.
I just know that our completion rate is quite high. That's why I'd like the percentage. Sometimes we dwell on the dropout rate or the graduation rate, but our completion rate is really...
Completion rate for the district is okay. But in the completion rate and the student status for 2006, you have graduation, and then the other grad, and then the high school, and then the dropout rate. But you want a completion rate just for our district.
Yes. And just to clear it up, the completion rate's eighty-six percent.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments? Wow, now I'm dead too loud. Mr. Powers?
Thank you, Dr. Scuero. Mr. Gonzalez, so the only thing I've asked, where are we headed with the data, with the task? Are we going to be a recognized or exemplary district, or are we close to it?
Mr. Powers, members of the board, what this data is, is of course a year behind. It tells you all the campuses where they were recognized, saying they were acceptable. We did not have any unacceptable campuses. Last year's rating was an acceptable campus. I mean, acceptable district. What we're looking for, we hope, talks is right around the corner. It starts in March, goes through April. And we hope, we hope to get up there and be recognized, and to all our campuses to be recognized or exemplary. That's our goal, so we're moving in that direction.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Thank you, Mr. Vasquez. That was a great presentation. I'm glad that we got our sound back. I, you know, I thank you for your patience, and I apologize for our technical difficulties. Just to recap a little bit, in case you weren't able to hear me, when we went into a moment of silence, I did ask that you keep Ms. Brenda Lee Nunez in your thoughts and in your prayers. She was a graduating junior at Pace High School that very tragically passed away here just recently. So, please, I ask that you keep Brenda and the entire Nunez family in your thoughts and prayers. I thank you. Moving on to item two. Presentation of 2008-2009 Budget Calendar. Mr. Gonzalez.
Thank you, Dr. Scuero, members of the board. On page thirty, you'll see our proposed budget calendar. And what we're looking at, of course, we already started the budget process, and it goes through, and we're on a June, I mean, a June 30th cycle. So, by June 30th, we should have our budget totally approved and prepared. Our first school board budget committee meeting, we hope to schedule it by the 21st, for the 21st, at 5:30, if that's okay. I think, Mr. Powers, your argument, or is it Mr. Lehman? Is it Mr. Colunga?
Mr. Colunga's the chair.
Is that okay? Is that, any problems with that? None?
No.
And what we're going to do, that should be a short meeting of about fifteen to thirty minutes, just basically telling you what we're going to be doing. And then, on the same day and a night, on a side note, I like to have a policy committee meeting. If Mr. Aguilada agrees, we could do one immediately following at six o'clock. Is that okay?
That's fine.
And so, this is your budget calendar as we go through it, and with the public hearing scheduled for June 26th and being able to do what we need to do. One thing we need to realize, that this year's budget is going to be a little bit tighter budget, simply because we've already maxed out on all the funding. There's no new funding for this year in accordance with the funding formulas that we have. Tony and I are working very hard on this budget, and we're going to be okay. It's just going to have to tighten up a little bit here and there to be able to make everything meet at the end. But we'll carry you through that on the 21st.
Questions or comments from the board? Mr. Aguilada?
Well, I'm glad to see that you all have a budget calendar, even though some of these things have happened in already last month. I'm very concerned about the staffing formulas. I understand some of these, I'm pretty sure I have met with principals or anything like that, or department heads. Is that the case?
We've started just telling out information.
Yes, that's what I'm saying. That has happened already.
That's already happened.
Well, I hope that we listen to our administrators when they come with proposals for these programs or principal with staff. And they don't have, some of these recommendations, they don't have to come to the board for our department heads to recommend, you know? And they don't have to be intimidated to say, "Well, show me where the board has approved this," and where there's concern about that out in the field. So, I'm glad that it's happening, and I hope that we have time to listen to those administrators. After all, they're the ones that are out there in the fields that know better than us sitting here as board members, or sometimes as mid-management or upper administration, Mr. Gonzalez. Thank you, sir.
No problem. Mr. Aguilada, any other questions or comments? If not, we move on to item three. Presentation of notification of contingency fund change orders for classroom wing additions to Falkensville Middle Schools, change order number two and number three. Mr. Gonzalez?
They're there for your review. This is not a change order to the contract in any form. This is to the contingency fund, and just a notification of what we need to do.
Questions or comments?
Are we on schedule? I understood that we're already moving this Monday, or not necessarily?
We already put furniture at Falk, and we're in the process of moving the eighth graders to the new wing.
I see. I mean, because I know we're in a testing period, that would be disruptive for...
As long as we don't disrupt the classes, we're going to be okay.
Be prudent to wait until the six weeks and, I guess, taxes or...
We're working it through Ms. Ayala.
Don't want to be disrupted. That was one of the concerns I had.
Mr. Caldereta. It's not a problem. We're moving it at the right time. The furniture's already in. It's not ready yet.
But we haven't moved any children yet?
No. But we have to put the furniture in.
Please consider that.
Any other comments or questions? If not, we move to standing board agenda items, four board calendars. Mr. Gonzalez?
Thank you, Dr. Scuero, members of the board. We have just a few items that I want to highlight for you all, and that's, of course, the, what's coming up on the week of the 25th. That's the big Saturday week for us, and we want to be able to look at that. BISF locorica is at 7:00 PM on the 25th. We do have early dismissal and the children's parade on the 28th. And, you know, all of you will be participating on that. And of course, that's the Saturday's week. One thing that we didn't put in the calendar, but we'll remind you, is that now that we know that it's the 21st, we'll have two committee meetings, budget and policy. On March, on the 4th, is the primary day, voting day, on March the 4th. So, all tax testing will be suspended by the state on that day and moved. And we got a new schedule coming, so on the 7th, we'll be actually tax testing. So, we don't have to worry about the 4th. That's going to be a voting day, and we also have a board meeting here. So, as long as we get through with the board meeting, we'll be able to see the results of the primaries. It's going to be a very interesting. And of course, March has spring break right after that, then we have Public School Week, we have Easter break, so March is filled with a lot of things, and we'll go on later. But that's basically it for this calendar, unless you have any questions.
We'll have the NSBA conference the last week in March.
Yes, that's the, in Orlando. That National School Board Conference.
We're going back to see the mouse, right?
Yeah, we're going to go see the mouse.
Any other questions or comments, Mr. Powers?
Thank you, Dr. Scuero. Mr. Gonzalez, if possible, have an insurance meeting, if possible, March the 6th, right before we go to spring break? That way, we can get, not to worry about it.
Not a problem.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? If not, we move on to item nine, public audience. The next item on our agenda is the public comment period. This is a time for citizen, staff, or students to provide their comments to the board. Statements and questions from the audience will not be permitted during the points of the meeting, so please let us hear from you now if you have comments to present. To have your comments heard tonight, your names and the subject matter of your comments must appear on the signing sheet, which is located in the rear of the meeting room. Each speaker will be limited to five minutes to complete his or her comments, and with all due courtesy, I will strictly enforce that time limit. If a group of people want to be heard on the same topic, the board asks that they designate a spokesperson to avoid needless repetition. The board has adopted rules to preclude the abuse of open form by, for example, anyone uselessly repeating the same comment or complaint, meeting after meeting. All participants must understand that if your comment, that if your comment, in my judgment, constitutes a complaint against an employer and officer, I will interrupt you and ask you, direct you to proceed with the BISD formal grievance procedures, be that DGBA, FNG, and GF Local. With all cautious in mind, we will not be glad to hear your general comments. Our speaker today is Orlando C. Trevino, and the subject is general comments.
Mr. Board President, Dr. Scuero, board members, Superintendent Hector Gonzalez, administration and public. Before I say anything, I will, I would like to give my condolences and prayers to the family of the young lady whose life was taken this weekend. This Saturday, you all held an all-out effort to get way over a thousand people with their passports. In fact, I went and got the passport for my daughter this weekend. I want to commend highly the board, Superintendent Hector Gonzalez, his administration, all employees that were involved, Chief Oscar Garcia, his security and everybody. I've never seen anything so organized in my life. I would like to especially thank Mrs. Susan Fox and County District Clerk Arroyo de la Garza. They were both present at all times. You all got a heck of a lot more efficient way of running things than the Social Security, post office, and where I get my driver's license renewed. I mean, over there, it takes you two hours to get twenty people moving. You all moved thou, way over a thousand people this weekend, so I want to commend and thank you very much. And hopefully, you can, oh, one thing that I did leave out, which is the most important thing to me, my daughter is one that does not like to miss school. And by you all doing it Saturday, I saw, because the kids have to be present to get their photographs. This allowed them, them and their parents, to be present without them missing school and affecting their schoolwork. You got tasks, you got all these other tasks going on. So, I want to commend everybody, the school board members, like I said, Mr. Hector Gonzalez, administration, but Ms. Susan Galvane, you, and District Clerk Arroyo de la Garza and her staff, all the employees did a magnificent, magnificent job. Thank you very much for the effort, and hopefully, you can do it every Saturday. Maybe we get all the passports around the county. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Trevino. Moving on to item 10, closed meeting at Pursuit Tech...
This message, please, here. I'm very, I'm came in late, but I have a very important announcement. It's your decision, I was just turning.
We'll give you five minutes.
Thank you, sir. I expect only two. I don't want to take advantage of the situation, but...
Just please state your name for the record and your subject matter.
Yes, oh, yes. I first want to congratulate every school board member. I was not able to make it last month, recognition month. Even Joe Colunga's here in time, and so he's doing a good job. So, everybody's doing a good job. I don't know how we're going to be running against these people that are up there. I still haven't made up my mind against who, but anyway, that's neither here nor there. I do want to touch a little bit on what Mr. Orlando talked about, about the young lady, because the community hurts also. Just happens to be that my daughter is a teacher to both of them, and she's been suffering too, like everybody in Brownsville. And last night, they had a very big meeting at 8:00 PM at St. Mary's for Volunteers Against Violence, and that place was packed, just wanted to let you know. And it's something that hurts the community. I don't want to be redundant, but anyway, I have a, everybody has a problem. Everybody comes here. The last time I spoke was way long time ago, and I said, "Everybody comes in with complaints." And we had a gentleman right behind me that signed up, and he left. So, maybe I can speak ahead of those people, and we make it real simple, and everybody speaks good about the board, because they don't get paid. A lot of people think they get paid, they don't know that it's hard work, unless you have served on the board before. What I have before you is, I have a solution to the dropout problem, and don't look at me and all the AIS, you know, here and everything, and they're doing a good job. But I worked for the county, and at that time, I'm working for the school district now, but that time, when I, when I was working with the county, I was the director of youth programs for Cameron County, not just Brownsville, Cameron County, and we were working on dropout. And how that program works is that the county pays the in-school students and the out-of-school, and that helps prevent dropout, I mean, considerably. And it's been proven throughout the nation, but the president didn't agree, your president, I don't know whose president, that yo-yo over there, that didn't agree on helping the poor. This is for mostly poor people that have economic problems. One of the reasons that anybody will tell you that we have youth problems here or dropout because of the economic situation, and if you have not touched that, then we're in a different plane. But I did want to tell you, offer my services to whoever's heading that department, whoever's doing that, and I want to thank Mr. Orlando Aguilada, who's always doing real outstanding jobs in the community, with the speaker at our commencement exercises, and I tell you, I gave all an F except for Orlando Aguilada. He spoke very clearly, and I was really surprised, and none of you were there. You treat us like we're orphans? Or you just didn't care that night, or everybody was busy? But Mr. Aguilada was there, outstanding presentation, and Ms. Fox, not Ms. Fox, Ms. Moore, Sharon Moore, who was one of my principals, I can't even remember her name, was there. And where's Ms. Moore? Yeah, but she was there. She was there. I have to recognize her. Always been an outstanding administrator. When she takes over a job, I mean, she finishes. It's not two ways about it, but she does a good job. All the administrators have done a good job. Ms. Ayala, oh, man, I can't speak enough. I would be here all day. All the kids used to love her still, and the kids would say, my son would say, when Ms. Ayala walked the hall, there, all the teachers in attention. And she was, she was tough, but she got the job done. I transferred my son from one school to over there, so he could go there, and we've been happy ever since. And I, and I thank you, Dr. Scuero, for letting me speak for three minutes, right?
Did you state your name for the record? I may have missed it.
Well, okay. Anyway, thank you very much. You guys doing a good job. You guys doing a good job.
That was Mr. Beto Medano for the record.
Always giving school teachers a raise, and I'm glad you're working on the budget early. We're asking only for $2,000 this year. As your former AOB president, Albert is not here, I don't think, but $2,000 will be enough. I want to thank you for working that in and eliminated the other things that we don't need. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Moving on to item 10, closed meeting at Pursuit Tech Government Code, Section 551.071 at SEC. We will now address item five, Level Three Grievance, Elizabeth Hatch, number 010-07/08. Board now goes to closed session. The board reconvenes after closed session. Moving on to item seven, Board Action on Level Three Grievance, Elizabeth Hatch, number Do I have a motion? Mr. Cortez?
President, I'd move to uphold Level Two.
Have a motion by Mr. Cortez to uphold Level Two. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
I have a motion by Mr. Cortez, seconded by Mr. Lehman. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Aye.
Oh, that was, please see, raise your right hand. Okay, I'll oppose. The motion passes four to three. Mr.?
I raised my hand the first time, but it was meant for me to...
Okay, let's clarify. Let's just clarify.
Just clarify.
Let's clarify. All in favor of upholding Level Two? Raise your right hand.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, the motion passes four to three.
My apologies, sir.
It's all right. It's okay. It happens. Moving on to level, to number six, Level Three Grievance, Roger Burns, number 011-07/08. I have reviewed the underlying documentation of this Level Three hearing, and it is my opinion that from the onset, the grievance categorizes his grievance as a complaint against three BISD employees. Those employees responded to the complaint and were present at both Level One and Level Two, and are present here tonight at Level Three. As president and president officer of this matter, and in confrontation with legal counsel, I conclude that this matter does constitute a complaint against BISD employees, and as such, the hearing will be conducted in executive session. So, with that in mind, the board goes into closed meeting at Pursuit Tech Government Code, Section 551.071 at SEC. The board reconvenes after closed session. Item eight, Board Action, Level Three Grievance, Roger Burns, number 001-07/08. Do I have a motion? Do I have a motion? The item dies for lack of motion.
Mr. President?
Mr. Powers?
Make sure the record reflects that I recuse myself and did not deliberate.
So noted. Thank you. Moving on to item 11, Consent Agenda. I have received a list from my colleagues indicating that there is a need to discuss and/or deliberate the following agenda items, and there's only one, which is number eighteen under E, petitions and applications. All other items are under consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move.
I have a motion by Mr. Powers, seconded by Mr. Cortez. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Item eighteen, recommend approval to submit an application to the Texas Education Agency for the listed innovative courses for the period of 2009-2009 through 2012-2013. I'll open the floor for discussion. Mr. Cortez?
On these new, these new classes, courses, what campuses will be, would have these?
Mr. Gonzalez?
Thank you, Dr. Scuero. Most of these are high schools. They're secondary. K is only for secondary. It's not elementary classes at all. This is all for basically high school, but it doesn't mean it couldn't bleed over into the, to the middle school system necessarily. But these are current technology.
So, all the high schools are going to have all of these?
They'll be offered available. Doesn't mean all of them will have it, but they'd be available, and those are the classes that we're asking for them to be approved. It doesn't mean that every high school, if there's enough students that want to sign up for it, then they sign up for it.
That was my question.
Yes, but if there's not enough students to sign up for it, well, then, they're not particularly offered there.
How often, how often do we go out and go do this sort of thing where they have innovative course approval? I mean, I think it's, it's a good thing what I'm seeing. I had a conversation, I want to say, with Dr. Zandone, maybe about a week ago, and she was telling me that at the K program, no, not Dr., it was somebody else at the Jump Rope for Heart event, and...
Felipe Reyes is our director for current technology.
And they were, they were telling us that our K program is like number seven in the state, as far as its size, and so, you know, anytime that we can increase the available courses for the students, I, you know, I'm in favor of it. I'm just wondering if all the high schools are going to have an opportunity to have these classes?
And as room comes available, we offer them as many as we can. We take a survey, we do, we encourage the students to enroll in current technology classes, and this is what we do. I'm a current technology person myself, so I understand it completely. I'm a current technology person myself, so I understand it completely. And these are classes that are available to students that need, that want to take them. Our new high school is going to have basically a current technology magnet program in there for students that wanna take more into the trade than anything else because we feel we need them. So this course, when do we, when do we apply for them? Whenever we need them and Felipe knows this, he's worked at Region One before and Mr. Reyes is there to answer any questions you might have, but they're all good classes for our students to take. So they'll be available to students if they sign up for them.
There's one on here, exploring educational careers, is that to, for high school students who are thinking of going into, into the field of education, to give them-
Mr. Reyes?
Yes, sir, and we were trying to create an introductory course that would fit in with our magnet for, our teacher magnet and that's what it's really designed to do, sir.
Right, and then there's one, Intro to Hospitality and Tourism and Financial Planning. The Financial Planning one, I think is, Otis loves that one, yeah.
Maybe he can teach it.
Mr. Aguilera?
Uh, thank you, doctor. Yes, I think this all are excellent. And you said that we offer to all students. I wonder, what are the grade levels are in the high school? For instance, if I were a senior, will I be taking introduction to career training? You see?
Yes, sir, most of the introductory courses start out at the ninth grade.
But that's what I'm saying.
They are allowed to take-
Which one of those is nine, tenth, eleventh or twelfth grade level? They'll be assigned to a certain grade level.
Yes, sir, there is that recommended grade level to be offered at, but at juniors, seniors, they're also allowed to take these courses as well.
As I say here, that's what I'm asking.
Right, there wasn't a breakdown though.
Also, pretty soon we're gonna have choice lifts at high school. And I hope that our counselors and I know they will, go out there and will they be ready for next year?
Yes, sir, they will.
And again, it goes back to the budget, that if there should not be students in every high school to take whatever course it might be, that we make an effort to find the right personnel to teach these courses. I think they're excellent.
And I just might wanna add just to, because you opened this door up, on the twenty-first, when we have our initial budget meeting, I'm gonna tell you exactly how it's gonna, it's gonna be a little different. The master schedules will be done before we complete our budget, that way we know exactly what issues we need.
And that's good, I think that's a very good process because that would give us, reflect a good, true budget itself. But again, I'm encouraging the administration to listen to the administrators, they're the ones that know what to run those programs. And we need to find the money, really. And although you say it's gonna be tight, but still, we need to make an effort to find all this money, to fund all these courses, all this personnel that are needed, not only in the core subject, but in every courses, including these new ones that we're going to have.
They need that money.
Thank you, sir.
Current technology has a little bit of money, right?
Yes, sir, we've got enough to support this.
And one thing I wanna say is that, and I wanna say it out loud, we're in Washington and one of the things that the president's proposing cutting is current technology money. So call your congressman and the ones that represent us in Washington and tell them how important it is to keep current technology and to keep it fully funded because that's not one thing that needs to be cut.
Any other questions or comments? Mrs. Galván?
Just one comment added to what Superintendent said. These are the courses that keep students in school.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Do you have a motion to approve item eighteen?
Move.
Have a motion by Mr. Cortez, seconded by Mr. Powers, all in favor, raise your right hand.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Item twelve is closed meeting as pursuit of text government code, section five five one point zero seven one at SEC. The board goes into closed session. Session, moving on to item thirteen, announcements, number thirty-one, the next scheduled board meeting of the board trustees is on Tuesday, February nineteenth, two thousand and eight, here at the administration building at five thirty PM. Mr. Gonzalez, any other announcements? No? Mr. Cortez?
Yeah, I just-
Mr. Cortez?
I just wanted to make a comment. I went to the Jump Rope for Heart event. It was about seven hundred elementary students there, it was a, it was a great event. They gave away an area of like seven or some, between seven and ten bicycles to the students and all the kids had a great time. Whoever put that event together did an outstanding job.
Mrs. Galván?
Yeah, I did wanna make a comment and it was on the superintendent. We did go to Washington DC and he did represent our district and the valley on different issues that were presented to, to the, to the House, to our congressman. And I just really appreciate his efforts and how he stood up for the children of this valley, so thank you, Superintendent.
Good point, thank you, Mrs. Galván. Any other announcements, comments? If not, item fourteen, adjournment, do you have a motion?
Move.
Motion by Mr. Powers, seconded by Mr. Cortez, all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes unanimously, this means adjournment, have a good night.
And maybe next time Beto can get us into the White House.